All in order, then we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I announce my closed session? It's interrupting the agenda. Item number three is public comment. Sorry, missed roll call.
Chris Vol. Chris Iden.
Here.
Kent Charneski.
Here.
Kelly Coyle.
Here.
Alex Vedvik.
Here.
Aaron Mishka.
Here.
Craig Mortensen.
Here.
All right, now there's announcement of a closed session later on in the agenda, and right now we have public comments. First up is Fay.
Okay.
No, I'll call you. You were the last one on the list? Go ahead Bernie, you're already up there, go ahead.
Oh, I'll stand and listen here.
Well, you could have went ahead and went, but that's all right.
He's getting steps in.
Fay Buckberger, eight twenty-four West Nelson Road, Cronin Wetter, Wisconsin. I ask that this letter be read today because I am very concerned about the temperament of some of our residents. She attached a Facebook post from Holly Vol- Volli. She writes, "A sunset wasn't the end of the day for us. It's been a long and very hard day for the Vols, ending with an unsigned letter to the editor against Chris. I am just done. There are too many horrible people in this life. Shame on all of them. Donald, Guy, Joel, Ron, Ken, Lynette, Fay, Dean, Bernie, and some others. I wish them only heart attacks, car accidents, trees falling, or maybe some animal trampolines. And yet I can't do or say anything. So unfair. I think I'll try voodoo. Anyone with me?" Fay continues, "The Facebook post printed for you is from the Facebook account of Holly Volli, Holly Vol's Facebook name. It has since been deleted. That does not negate its damage. Apparently Mrs. Vol had a hard day. She was not happy about the pinion letter in the Wasa Pilot and Review. She posted the threat against the nine of us on her private page. That does not matter. Anyone knows that there is no such thing as privacy on social media. Your statements can never be retracted." Then she accused Joel Strobe of stalking her Facebook page. I assure you that Joel Strobe had nothing to do with the release of the post from Mrs. Vol's Facebook page. Rather, only someone that has access can see your posts, and all of the threatened individuals are blocked and cannot see what Mrs. Vol posts. But others can, and it was leaked to a number of us, including Joel Strobe. That does not matter. The letter to the editor was signed by the Committee for Civil Discourse. It was and is not now a secret whom is in this group. I'm sorry if somehow Holly Vol missed the post listing our names and our purpose. We promote civil discourse to encourage people to seek facts and support their opinions by factual data, not assumptions, and to treat each other with respect when discussing issues of concern regarding Cronin Wetter. This post is the farthest thing from civil that I can imagine. It is no excuse that I had a bad day. It is no excuse that it was a private message. It is clear that Holly Vol sees opposition to her views as horrible, that Donald, Guy, Joel, Ron, Ken, Lynette, Fay, Dean, Bernie, and some others are somehow worthless, and therefore it is acceptable to threaten them with heart attacks, car accidents, tree falling, animal trampoline and voodoo. Sadly, this hateful attitude was reinforced by other Cronin Wetter residents in response to her threats. I am ashamed to say that I am a Cronin Wetter resident. I'm ashamed that Holly Vol is our president's wife. I'm ashamed that someone like Bernie Kramer has had his life threatened. I am disgusted. This threatening behavior from Holly threatens Vice Kurt C. Slick and letters by concerned citizens of Cronin Wetter who a couple of years ago attacked people on the basis of their disabilities is disgusting. You, Holly Vol, have crossed the line. God will hold you and your hateful supporters accountable. In the interim, I make this my mission to see that your term as our first lady ends. Actions have consequences."
All right, next is Sean DeMay.
To the Village of Cronin Wetter Board Members, from Sean DeMay, eight thirty-nine Oak Road, Cronin Wetter, Wisconsin. Board Members, as you all know, I do not think very highly of showboating and political theatrics, and I always try to approach situations with the least amount of public pomp and circumstance as humanly possible. Unfortunately, I have learned that the internal corruption and negligent disregard for both the law and the citizens of Cronin Wetter proves this is not the way to get action with this current board. The time has come for the citizens to start to stand up and expose the nonsense that has become our village's government. Last week's board meeting was yet another disgusting display of individual trustees' personal vendetta against other trustees that went completely unchecked by the presiding officer. The continued barrage of hateful, disrespectful, and absolutely off-topic attacks directed at trustee Charneski that consumed the meeting is unacceptable. For over two years, the same group of disenfranchised, self-centered childish trustees who can think of nothing other than twisting every single conversation, no matter how off-topic it may be, into some form of imaginary wrong that trustee Charneski has done to hurt their feelings is sickening. The vilification of those you don't agree with and the deceitful venomous rhetoric spewed by those individuals for hours upon hours of board and committee meetings has paralyzed the village's government to the point that we have once again lost employees and have millions, yes, I said millions, of missing dollars that the board doesn't even know is missing. When interim administrator Manley was here, her report to the board on finances showed we had close to three million dollars in our undetonated funds, and she even said, "This village is financially healthier than any village I have worked with." Here we are two years later, and we don't even have enough money in our accounts to meet our minimum reserves. Where did the money go? I can tell you a whole lot of it was used on frivolous reports from law firms that were contracted against the board's direct vote not to. That's okay, though. Some board members are fine with spending whatever it takes to smear a board member they don't like. Just to clarify, trustee Charneski has my respect as a board member as someone who stands up for his community and doesn't buckle into the public propaganda generated by those that want their way. We may not agree on everything, but he conducts himself like an adult, which is far more than we can say for other trustees. Next, we have all the wasted taxpayer dollars on ad hoc committees that yielded zero results. There was a committee on committees a year ago that spent tax dollar money to go where? Nowhere. The recommendations never even made it on the board agenda. There is a committee on the ambulance situation that seems to not be able to follow its directive and has dealt into all sorts of random things and has yielded absolutely nothing. Now we end up with tonight's agenda, RFP for ambulance service. Last week, the board made it clear that clip would look at the concerns at our fire chief, whom has also taken a beating because, once again, this board handled the entire ambulance situation incorrectly from day one. Had were the terms of our current contract being met? Somehow that committee was allowed to stray off of its board's directed tasks in the talks of RFPs for service and not address what it has tasks to do. Then after the committee failed to perform its directed tasks, this issue somehow made it on the board agenda for discussion. How did the committee chair allow the committee to stray away, and how did the president of the village, whom has been in the position for many years, then allow it to make it onto the board agenda? Another example of not following the statutes, ordinances, and proper procedures by our board. Enough is enough. I am for one, I for one am sick of it, and I am going to start publicly posting every email I sent that was ignored, every email I received from staff members asking for help that I brought up that was ignored, and every other piece of evidence I have to show the village that the vilification of the singular trustee that has stood up for the citizens time and time again, no matter how much hate and lies were hurled at him, is what has brought us to this breaking point, not him. I respectfully request that this board, even the lame ducked members, take their oaths to the citizens seriously and stop generating this toxic nonsense and focus on what is right for the village, not your ego or your Facebook popularity. We have enough venomous rhetoric being spewed by the citizens. Do better."
All right, next up is Joel Strobe.
Okay, I can't read that fast, but I'll just put it out here. Joel Strobe, I go by Joe when I'm not working under official capacity or legal matters, so it's Joe, please. Eight sixty, West Nelson Road. Why was the Dempsey Law Firm not, why has the Dempsey Law Firm not announced its conflict of interest in matters concerning certain village staff members and myself? I contacted Dempsey Law about a month or so before they accepted the offer by Cronin Wetter to serve as Cronin Wetter's new village attorney. When a paralegal from Dempsey Law asked for details of my issues with the village, she was wowed by what I was telling her. In April twenty eighteen, a neighbor got an area variance that went against the purpose and intent of our zoning ordinances. There has never been a legal explanation given by any law firm explaining how the neighbor is able to be exempted from complying with the law. An open records request seeking a copy of the Wonsell roadway access permit application came back missing the second page. The village gave Mr. Wonsell their approval to put his roadway access twenty feet too close to ours. When this was pointed out to Mr. Pfeifer, he quickly crafted a second page and applied a variance to an expired application from two years earlier. At this point, the abuses and damages to our property warranted a criminal complaint to be reported to our local law enforcement. I sat down with Chief McHugh and Lieutenant Smart in a conference room in the police station and showed them documentation of the various laws that were believed to have been violated. I provided my complaint in verbal form. My complaint was for an alleged violation of forgery, a Class H felony, against Mr. Pfeifer and former village administrator interim public works director, Richard Downey. When brought to Chief McHugh, he told me that he had a conflict of interest to pursue a criminal investigation into Mr. Pfeifer and Mr. Downey's actions, and purportedly he crafted and delivered his written version of my complaint to the Marathon County Sheriff's Office instead. The sheriff's department claimed they had a conflict of interest, and they sent the investigation down to Detective Lepek of the Stevens Point Police Department. Chief McHugh opened up his own complaint against me and my behavior while I was serving as village trustee. I was looking out for the people's best interest in providing insight into why was select cronyism happening in our community. The complaint by Chief McHugh is referred to by Detective Lepek as a united concern. Those other names associated with the term united concern are not known. Chief McHugh's report initiated an investigation into misconduct in office against me. Why Chief McHugh had a conflict of interest with staffers Randy Pfeifer and Richard Downey, but no conflict of interest with trustee Joel Strobe still remains a mystery. Detective Lepek made it known that he was investigating two complaints at the same time, my forgery complaint and Chief McHugh's united concern complaint. Detective Lepek's final report went through the Marathon County DA's office first before finally ending up in the Lincoln County DA's office. District Attorney Christopher Ellis recently wrote a memo saying that he saw nothing wrong with the action of Pfeifer and Downey. In a text message, I sent Detective Lepek that asked if the forgery complaint was ever conducted. He answered, "No, it wasn't." DA Ellis has drawn a conclusion based only on the complaint from a group of united concern unknowns, and he is totally unaware of my complaint. The criminal complaint by me that was ignored will need to be reopened by either Detective Lepek or someone else to finish the investigation. The case is not closed until the DA can review the updated investigative reports of all the facts in the matter, or from a judge who steps in to make a final ruling. This is what happens in Cronin Wetter. You go to the police with an honest complaint, and they start an investigation into you instead. Thank you.
Next up is Holly Vol.
Holly Vol, nineteen forty-four Plantation Lane, Cronin Wetter. To the people of Cronin Wetter, this letter is in response to the incredibly unbelievable attention that my Facebook post has gotten with the overreaction that I want to kill people and have threatened their lives. That is such a ridiculous overreaction that I have to speak out. Yes, I was angry and being facetious on Facebook. I never said I was going to kill anyone or that I would harm anyone. I did not name last names, and indeed, I know more than one Joe, Donald, Fay, and others. I dare anyone to put last names with every single of the nine names listed. It is amazing that some people want to make such mountains out of molehills. No one was threatened with bodily harm. A police officer and lawyer have reviewed the post in question, and there is no credible threat. And voodoo? How can anyone read that and believe I'm going to try voodoo on people or cause car accidents? Joel, Joe Strobe isn't telling the truth either about most of the posts he continues to feed. It's a shame he's such an angry person, but I am not going to continue feeding his negativity. As my grandmother always said, "Consider the source." I really am disgusted with some Cronin Wetter residents too, but I will not kill any of them. You have my solemn promise that I won't. The letter to the editor in question is full to the brim of falsehoods and inaccurate information. I'm proud of being a native of Cronin Wetter and have done so many things to help make it better. I wonder, have all the others who are being so nasty negative? Have you planted flowers in the parks, picked up garbage, created community events? If not, then do that and do better, as the first lady of the United States, Melania Trump, says, "Be better." Holly Vol.
All right, Bernie.
Good evening, Mr. President Trustee. My name is Bernie Kramer. With twenty-one fifty, East State Highway one fifty-three, Pepplin. It's good to see all of you as always. I just want to make a couple of comments on the ambulance situation. I have to tell you, I'm really a happy camper right now in Cronin Wetter. We've got such a, really a strong deal. Most communities would be happier than hell if they had an ambulance cost like we do, little over eight dollars per capita, and paramedic, and along with response, and cost, total cost around seventy thousand dollars a year, and it's a straight-line deal. I think this is the fourth year coming up now. It'll be around seventy, and the audit showed seventy-one thousand for twenty-three. And it's really a good situation for Cronin Wetter. And then you look at all the other funds in Cronin Wetter. As far as cost goes, take a look at the budget, general fund. In twenty-one, four million. In twenty-five, six million. And that's a fifty percent increase in those four years. And another thing that came up, I had a nice talk with the fire chief after the last meeting, and she implies that in two years Cronin Wetter will have a demand for six hundred ambulance calls. And I wanted to know how and why. Well, I went home and I started looking at some numbers, and we have a population of eighty-five hundred now, four hundred calls. So if we're going to get up to six hundred calls, that's fifty percent more than we're getting now, our population would have to increase to thirteen thousand from eighty-five hundred. And, I mean, I don't know when that's going to happen. I'll be dead and gone, but I mean, it's not practical. You can't, when you throw numbers around like that, I mean, it's, you're putting out misinformation, like a lot of things are in her plan. I mean, I wouldn't want to go through her plan compared to what we got now. And I handed out the education requirements for epidemic tonight to you people, and you can see the difference. I mean, you've got a EMR, first two credits, and you have paramedic, thirty-nine. They're required to go to work in a doctor's office and work with them for two semesters to get their credit rating to be a paramedic. I mean, you have to go to work and really respect their level of skill. I mean, they not always be required to be at that level, but I mean, the fact of it is, it's a good place to be, and everybody else is doing it, including Wonsa. And for myself, geographically and everything about it, it's like a, it's like a fit. You know, it's like a meant-to-be situation here in Cronin Wetter. I mean, and another thing I want to point out in the, in our audit, page fifty-eight. On the ambulance, we paid out seventy-one thousand dollars. And also, the first responders were over budget by sixty-two thousand. So with their budget of forty, and then the over budget by sixty-two, that's a hundred thousand. That means we paid more for our first responders than we did for ambulance service for Riverside. Now, I'm not saying that. It's right here in page fifty-eight. And then in the fire department, they were over budget by seventy-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars. I mean, I'm not criticizing anybody. All I'm doing is looking at the numbers published by the auditor on page fifty-eight. So, I mean, and then if I go back here.
Hey Bernie, can you wrap it up? It's already been four and a half minutes.
Okay, and then what's so interesting is, by department, our expenditures, you know, there's no department that's going to get less money for the coming year. If you thought you had trouble with the budget for twenty-five, you're going to have a hell of a lot more problems than twenty-six, and I think you better start thinking about it now. Because in this various graph here, which the treasurer showed us, I mean, here are the graph lines. I mean, and they're all, they're all on the upswing. And, you know, Public Works, I mean, they think a big bite. Well, somebody made a statement, I got to get this off my shoulder. They said that Cronin Wetter Drive Road is crumbling. Well, they ought to go out and drive Pepplin and a few of those other roads and see the patches on there. And I have to say one thing about our road crew, they sure as hell know how to patch roads. I mean, they put a patch on it. There's no loose crumbling around there. I mean, they can put three patches down and.
Bernie, it's been five and a half minutes now.
And it's really in good shape. So, I mean, thank you all, and good luck, and I just want to let you know that I'm a happy camper to be in Cronin Wetter with Riverside Ambulance Service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had a request to move up the closed session since we have some APC members present. Anybody have an issue with that?
Do I have the wrong agenda?
I don't know.
This is February tenth, Village Board.
Yep. Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
All right, we're going to move item nine up. The head of reports from staff and vendors. What's the matter, Ken?
He's got a different agenda for some reason.
Yeah, I don't have closed session on mine. Okay, if it's on there, I just didn't have it on mine.
Okay.
Make a motion moving to closed session?
Second. I gotta read it first.
Oh, sorry.
So consideration motion, we're in a closed session, we're sent to which stat nineteen five one C for consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation out of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or extra responsibility to hiring a village clerk. Now the motion be appropriate.
Make a motion moving to closed session?
Second. Motion by Kelly, second by Aaron, if convening in the closed session, any further discussion? Carrie Nutt, I'll call her, please.
Chris Moore.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Charneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Vedvik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes.
All right, motion carried, six, seven to zero. Yeah, we're going to invite Jordan on the left and Barry Smalling. It won't be very long, ten minutes tops, I suspect. Sir, motion.
Okay, so we're back open again?
Yeah, we need to reconvene.
Okay, make a motion reconvene in the open session?
Second.
Say you, Craig.
Second.
Okay, motion by Kelly, second by Craig, do we reconvene in the open session? All of everyone say aye.
Aye.
All right, actions after closed session.
I make a motion that we continue our recruiting efforts for a village clerk.
Kind of a motion, and Chris made a second to continue our recruiting efforts for a village clerk. Any further discussion? Here, not all of everyone say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now moving back up to item number four, reports from staff and vendors, police chief report. All right, LT standing in.
Okay, so there's a lot of information in there with the annual report. I think the biggest thing on the annual report is, there's a lot of things to encompass, you know, in the annual report, and we try to put as much as we can in there. But there's a lot of other things that, like specifically at the school that we attend, like this last week, the guys have been over there for Fourth Amendment and Fifth Amendment type things. The teachers will ask us to come in and help out with the classes here and there, just to give our opinion. So we're in there quite a bit as well. So I kind of wanted to highlight that the guys were in there more than those events that were listed on there. But anybody has any questions on any of that, just let me know.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thanks LT. All right, moving on to the interim finance director report. So I guess I think you've all had a chance to meet John, who's our interim finance director. Take it away, sir.
Thanks, Chris. My name is John Jacobs. I am serving as your interim finance director at this time. I started on January twenty-ninth. I come back to you with, and offer my services for whatever length of time that may be, to help you out as a community. My goal here is just to get everything caught up for the year twenty twenty-four, get through our financial audit here through spring and early summertime with an audit report here sometime probably after Labor, after Memorial Day sometime. And then to work with staff on twenty twenty-five, meeting goals, expectations that were, things that were in the budget, and then to help with the budget planning for twenty twenty-six. And then from there, we'll see what happens. It's pretty open-ended. I spent a whole, non, probably a penny on an automatic sign here, so I'm very cognizant, I'm trying to keep things minimal cost for our department. So otherwise, I kind of put in my report just kind of what things I've done in the last week and a half that I've been here. I've been very appreciative of staff. They've been very welcoming to me. Met everybody for the most part, and they are a very nice cohesive small group of individuals that have the village's interests at heart, and I sincerely mean that. And that I will be attending, utilities committee tomorrow meeting, tomorrow night with Greg, to hear a presentation from Ellers on some things that are going on with the water utility. And I look forward to any kinds of questions and things that you might have that come up over the coming months. Go through our president Vol for that, and then they'll come to me, and then I can get responses back to you. I will be serving on a part-time basis here for whatever length this is, and just trying to meet the expectations of trying to get everything caught up to speed, since you have a few individuals that have been with missing positions for a number of months. Are there any questions for me at all?
I guess the only question I have. January, we're supposed to make a ninety thousand dollar payment, and last year kind of got forgotten. Just want to make sure that payment was made for a fire truck.
I did talk with our account clerk, and she had told me that there was a payment that was made, I believe, prior to me being here. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it was made.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
And did you guys catch that John worked with the preliminary audit group last Friday? And that the audit is already going to be months earlier than it was last year?
Right, good.
I think two things that really are making this job very easy for me to get up to speed very quick. First off, I know CLA, their accounting firm. We had, I had dealt with them in my previous experience in municipal government here at another municipality. They were our auditors there, so I'm very familiar with the firm and how our relationship will work getting through the audit pretty quick and pretty efficiently. And then also the accounting software we use here. I'm very comfortable with using that software also. So I didn't really need anybody over my shoulder trying to show me how to do this, how to do that, how to put adjustments in or anything. That, I've used that same software probably for about ten, twelve years previously. So there's two things that I've got really, right off the bat, that are really easy for me to get going on things, so I don't have to spin my wheels at all from day one.
I liked your analogy the other day of slipping into an old shoe.
Yeah, it's like, I love slippers. I don't plan on coming to board meetings unless they, unless they do last a little longer to something comfortable, but I feel this is coming in, not saying that I am getting older or not, but I do like comfortable slippers, and this seems very an easy, easy fit. It would be the fourth community I will have worked at over my forty-plus year career, and it would be the smallest of the four. So there's a lot of things in bigger communities I've seen, not saying that we have to go down that road here for Cronin Wetter, but at least there's some things that questions departments might have of me that I might have had in my wheelhouse from a previous life in municipal government, so.
Anything else for John? All right, thanks, John.
Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard. All right, moving on, item number E, the village attorney report.
Good evening. Much shorter one tonight. One of these we actually heard about, one of these we actually heard about right after the last meeting, and then it made me remember that there were actually three of them, so we thought we'd clear that table, too. The three things are all kind of complaints to law enforcement, all right? And so this is the status. And one was by Mr. Strobe about that zoning variance that you've heard about previously. So. Oh, wait, the first one, okay. The first one is law enforcement complaints that Mr. Strobe tried to make against our own village staff. And this was after he received a citation. That's that case in municipal court that we kind of touched on the other day. So after getting the warnings and after getting issued a citation, he tried to make complaints against our own staff. There were two of them. I forgot there was two of them, but I was looking over the paperwork again. Basically, for once, this was actually addressed quickly. I discussed before how it takes, it seems like a long time to get these things through the police or the DA's office or whatever it is. This one turned around really fast, and nothing's been pursued, okay? Any questions to that one? Those two, I guess.
I guess if we haven't ever seen a complaint or anything, we really don't know what you're talking about, so. Right? I mean, we're talking about things here. I don't know what the relevance is to us, you know, pursuing our village business. And that one, you know, that was done eight months ago, and now we're hearing about it. I, I don't know why we're spending, spending time and money on this.
We had decided to make the board members more aware of all the legal things that are going on, and have been going on, and we neglected to report on that one previously, so just brought it out today. Like I said, the next one happened recently, and then that made me remember we didn't get to these other ones. And, you know, these things just fall through the cracks, I think, as far as getting notice to the board due to lack of administration, which you're aware we've had for quite a while now. Otherwise, that's probably how it come to your attention more quickly. So the second one was another complaint by Joel Straub. This is one that was against the former staff. This one's about the variance originally, which was like six years ago. And that one, I think, languished for about two years and just finally got wrapped up. It will not be pursued, it's going no further as well. And that you heard about, well, you heard about it again in public comment tonight, in part, okay? So.
So is that true? According to the public input, he, he put in a complaint about them altering a document, and then after waiting for it for like two years, it was tied up, and nobody could see it because it was under investigation. Then he finds out from the detective that his complaint was not really pursued against, you know, the document thing, but the police opened an investigation against him for making a complaint? Is that how that worked?
I don't know anything about that. That was, if that happened, it was before my time. You were asking me?
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's my.
I mean, I heard.
That's my understanding of, of what he said. You know, that he, he was texting with the detective and, and asked him what the result was because Ellis said there was nothing here to pursue, and it turns out that's because the actual complaint was not investigated. But Joel was investigated for making a complaint. That's, that's how I understand it, so.
Well, that, that was the public comment made tonight, which I have not heard ever before.
Okay, okay.
Don't know anything about that. Just trying to report that, you know.
And, and I guess, a- again, what does this matter? Because both of these people don't even work for the village anymore. That seems to be a, a thing between a citizen and some other citizens. It, I don't see where that involves the village.
Well, it kinda does involve the village. We got people that make criminal complaints or attempted criminal complaints against our staff, and that's all complained about very publicly, and I'm surprised to hear that it shouldn't be an update of what happened to those. We gotta listen to the allegations for two years. We can have a simple report that it's over.
Chair, would you like to comment if we're gonna keep talking?
Chris?
No.
I'd, I'd like, remember, this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting. That's the one thing, yeah.
It's not trial, it's an update of an open case that was just recently closed.
If anyone wants, I didn't, I didn't, just like last time, I didn't stack the packet with all these records. I mean, they're open records. If, if you want them, request the records. And I should say this, I meant this to say this last time, too. I mean, we, I was trying to go through things quickly to give you a rundown. If there's a request to have something in more detail on an agenda, you know, just talk to President Vol, or you can just leave it there. Just wanted to make you aware in general of what's going on, since we have done it a long time. And again, no administrator is pretty much why. Okay, so that's the second one, and then the third one. I forgot about this one, too. This started before my time. In twenty twenty-three now already, there was a complaint made against trustee Shirdeski for an electioneering violation, which is, you know, activity within a hundred feet from the door to the polling place when there's election activity. And that's just still open. So.
So that, that's.
I asked for an update, I didn't get one, so.
Well, that's, that's another one that, what happened, I interviewed with Channel Nine in, in the fire department over by the trucks, and someone filed a complaint about that. And that sat for like a year and a half, no, nothing happened on that. And then Chris, your, your wife filed a complaint, that complaint against me again, and somehow someone from the village police department contacted the sheriff department, who contacted the, the DA to say, hey, what's going on with this? And now all of a sudden, it's active again. So.
I don't know that it's ever been resolved. I don't think it's ever been resolved.
You don't want?
I don't believe it's ever been resolved, because I don't know why.
Well, I, I guess. As far as I understood it, it was a dead issue because the evidence wasn't there. But, but some, somebody kicked it loose again recently, so. So that's, again, that's between a private person and me, and we're spending ti- village time and money talking about something that I don't see how it affects the village.
Seems like election complaints have a high interest here. We got four of them to whack this year. Again, I, I don't know why we wouldn't mention where this is at.
Well, because I, I guess I didn't try to get village attorney to defend me, you know? There, there's no evidence there, so there's no money spent on, on my behalf here.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have anything else, Lee?
No, I'll talk again when we get to the RFP thing.
All right. Moving on, item number five, old business, the ambulance service request for proposal.
Well, I, I got a question on this because the, the last board meeting we had, we specifically sent to Clip a request to talk to the fire chief here and itemize her complaint so they could somehow be incorporated into the Riverside contract. But instead, Clip comes back with this thing for an RFP, and an RFP wasn't even on their agenda either. So I, I don't know why this is coming back to us, and.
Well, it came back because the committee recommended it, and that's the way the process works.
But that wasn't on their agenda to even talk about an RFP. It was, it was to talk about the contract, which is what we, as a board, sent to them to deal with. So it just seems like a switcheroo of some type here, where we ask for one thing specifically, and we got something else back.
Well, if this isn't what we asked for, then we need to send it back.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take full responsibility and credit for, for not doing that right, because I know at that, at that agenda, you know, when I got to the item, I even knocked a pat afterwards. I just, I just didn't feel right, it was like confusing, because I know, like, what was, was the agenda? After I got home, it clearly stated that we wanted to go through the service contract. And it turned out to be an RFP, and I, I'm sorry, I was confused, you know? I'm like, I did not, I, I for some reason thought, well, what did the board decide? You know, or we can, like I say, that, that is my fault, and like I say, it kinda changed on it, so.
Well, Chris, I, I agree with you. I move we send it back to Clip for, for examination of complaints and how they might apply to changes in the contract.
Okay, we got a motion by Ken, a second by Chris, to send this back to the APC, or sorry, Clip, to, to compile the list of complaints that was originally on this. So Chief, are you, do you have any?
They, they were provided, Clip was provided with all, everything. They were provided with the previous RFP, the current contract, as well as the list. They discussed it, asked me my opinion, which is, this village board voted twice last year to approve implementing an ambulance service in the village of Corona. I still feel that is, is in the best interest of this village to move that forward. However, since it has been blocked, certain parts of it has been blocked moving forward, that I would suggest going out for RFP. That is the motion they made. And recommended to the village board that they approve going out for RFP, or allowing me to put together that RFP and bring it back to the Clip, is what the motion was.
I don't see what would be unreasonable with the committee directing the fire chief put together RFP. I don't know if we even need a motion at all on this. I mean, it sounds like they're working on it. I mean, to me, it seemed ridiculous that it shouldn't have even gone to the ambulance subcommittee that has been working for months, spending many hours with the fire department on all the aspects of how the ambulance service works, whether it's our own ambulance service or contracted out. But the board voted four to three to send it to Clip. So board basically decided Clip take the lead on it. I don't even know why the board is voting on this and why we're saying they did anything wrong. If Clip and the discussion revolved around that, the contract has issues to address, like we've discussed numerous times in board meetings and at the ambulance committee, I don't see what the issue is with taking no action at the board on this and letting fire department draft together an RFP for Clip to review. I mean.
I think part of it.
Well, the, the issue, the issue is simple. The, the board asked for one thing, that was disregarded, and we got something else that we specifically said we didn't want to deal with when we discussed the issue and made the motion. So I, I think out of, you know, whatever you wanna call it, courtesy or professionalism or whatever, we should at least get what we asked for, and if the staff believes something else, they don't trump the village board. You know, at least get us back what we asked for, and then, and then we can move, go on from there.
Staff hasn't been trumping the village board. There were like three different motions we discussed regarding this topic. There was a ton of confusion, I can tell you that much. The original motion was something about alleged issues in the contract, or alleged complaints, which, you know, we all decided was kind of a crazy motion, right? And that's part of some of our problems, we have unclear motions a lot. But honestly, if we sent it to Clip, you know, it's kind of, if we determine it's their job to review the ambulance contract and determine next steps, and they determined that fire department should draft an RFP, the board shouldn't be stepping in and saying that they overstepped what they were doing. I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable for Clip to be working with the fire department about what an RFP might look like and a list of what things could be improved in the ambulance contract. I mean, I mean, I know there's like a push just to auto renew our existing contract, not even look at making any improvements whatsoever to ambulance service in the village, regardless how it might look like, and that's been incredibly frustrating.
Alex, that's exactly what the board motion was, to look at the contract and try to make, get the, get the chief's input for what changes she wouldn't like that might address the problems that she says she has. That's exactly what we were trying to get accomplished here.
And the one thing that I know we did talk about in Clip is that, you know, to get to the bottom of what's really going on, and one of the things was, of course, billing, and, you know, to explain the process, how all this works, and how would you solve that? I know one of the things you said you did not know how you would solve that. So, I mean, that's why I say we should look at some of this stuff.
And I, I did include a list to Clip of the items that I would suggest be in the contract, whether it's put in the RFP and then the contract is drafted from that, or added to the current contract. However, doesn't matter. They should be in the contract that is signed to protect our village residents. Billing is one of them, because that has been, that has been an issue. There are a number others, there was a whole list that was given to the Clip. I did not tell them the way to vote, I did not tell them the way to make their motion. They did it on their own, that was their decision, they asked for my opinion, I gave it.
Well, I'm not blaming you, I'm, I'm seeing.
Yeah, there is.
I'd like to, I'd like to have Clip do what we asked him to do.
I mean, this is, this is part of the inefficiency of the village, because we've gone through a lot of these issues at the ambulance committee. So we might as well have a committee that hasn't been involved really at all with the ambulance, start from square one again.
Just a quick topic on that, I don't wanna dwell on that, but, you know, I really appreciate the work the ambulance subcommittee's done. It's got, you may have spent a lot of time, but the board had asked for a report or just something. What has been the result of all these months of the ambulance?
Okay, well, we've.
Kelly, have you seen a report? Have you seen any documentation? I mean, I don't, could you give me a look, so?
No, I'm actually.
I, I just wanna.
I'm actually looking at the, the board minutes from when this got sent to Clip, and the fact that we got back an RFP actually technically falls within that. If you look, it says, "To assign Clip to review ambulance contract with fire chief and determine any concerns and see if they can be dealt with." So it was, presented to Clip, and from Clip came, you know what, let's just put an RFP out based on the concerns. I don't see that anything was done wrong. Why don't we just vote on doing the RFP? Because technically speaking, this fell within the, the criteria that Clip was given. And they, Clip sent it back to us and said, they recommend doing an RFP. That's, that's my take on this.
I guess we just wanted to, I wouldn't like to get to the bottom of what's really a problem, but, you know, all.
That li- that list was given to you, Chris, it was included in your clip pack.
But I mean, when we started talking about you, like you said, you didn't know.
No, no, the bill, how to address billing was the one thing I said I didn't know how to do.
Right.
Because I don't know how they, I don't know how they bill today, and they, I, I've heard multiple different ways. It's a manual process, and that is a problem.
Exactly, and then it makes you see how to solve that.
So that's something that should be in the contract, so that it's, you know, Corona weather residents are always billed as residents, so that if somebody isn't, we have something to stand on. Because right now, we don't. They could bill us all as non-resident, and who's to say they can't?
And they have.
Correct.
We have had many complaints, particularly people that live in the Mozenee School District. They have a much higher odds getting billed a non-resident rate. They're also more apt in their system to come up as Mozenee, Wisconsin, instead of Corona weather, Wisconsin. So then in that process, it gets billed the non-resident rate, because they don't have a way to check were they in Village of Corona Water or were they in the city of Mozenee? So if you're in the city, if you're in the Mozenee School District, your odds getting a non-resident rate are incredibly high, and those billing rates are much higher, and you have no recourse as a citizen.
It also affects some insurances, if it's considered non-resident, it kicks their insurance, and we talked about this, into auto network. So that, that is, that is a concern, and it should be part of the contract, any contract. But there was also a number of other items that were on that list. Billing was the one that you had questioned, Chris.
I think the RFP is a good idea, and that's where the discussion took us, so I don't think we should apologize for that. And I do agree with Kelly that that was within our scope to discuss that and have that motion. I think we should find the best deal for Corona weather and see what other ambulance services will offer us. That's a good thing.
I, I, I will make a side note. The ambulance that I got a quote on last summer is still available at that cost. So if we are to move forward, we still can do that. Just a note.
Well, my biggest concern with the item from last time was I wanted to see the list also, and I wanted, I wanted to find out if we could incorporate the changes into the current contract without doing an RFP. Because it's been my experience, and as soon as you sent out an RFP, whether it be municipal or private sector. as soon as you open that gate to ask for a price review, then it's all holds barred then at that point. Yeah, they can come in and say, "Okay, well, we'll give you that five percent increase that we weren't able to for the prior contract, but now you opened the door, so now's our chance to rebid it, essentially." So, that's a concern, because everybody was always, you know, during those ambulance committees they were talking about, or those meetings, that Riverside can't make it with what their charge is. It's below their cost, and they're going to raise the rates twenty percent or whatever. When you open up an RFP, there's their opportunity to actually do that. So, that's why I was hoping we could get the list of the concerns and see if we couldn't work with the current contract to include those concerns. And if we couldn't do that, then RFP would be the second step. That's what I had envisioned. What's going to happen with this, all right?
Well, I mean, so we, I know for a fact we have two offers on the table right now in terms of contract.
And that's with a, that's with the current contract.
Editing any portion of the current contract would reopen the door no matter what. So, going to RFP or not going to RFP is already revising the contract.
Negotiations are a lot deeper than RFP. RFP is just a blanket threat, so here, quote this. When you, when you open a contract, you're working with somebody, you're trying to work through the issues. Throwing out an RFP does not work with anybody. It says, "This is what we want, give me a price on it." It's totally different, in my opinion.
Right, I know, because the other thing I know Teresa talked about, is she did meet the new fire chief, and he seemed to be a pretty decent person.
I, I, I know Chief Briggs from other workings with him. He has his own training business, and we've had him in here a number of times. And him and I have met and discussed a number of times, a number of issues that have arisen in the last few weeks. So, yes, I mean, he's willing to, willing to discuss some things with me, which is better than we've had for the last year.
I mean, I think it's positive. I mean, I, I don't think we need to rush. I mean, we still have time, you know? We got the first of the year.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, a second to send this back to CLIP on the table. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, do we even need a motion?
We have a motion.
Oh yeah?
There's a bit of motion in the second, so we either, we have to take action on the motion, unless it gets withdrawn. And I don't think it's going to get withdrawn.
No.
Is there enough direction to the motion?
Send it back to CLIP isn't, I'm fine with CLIP continuing to work through whatever they're going to do with it, I mean.
The instructions work together. I would like, I mean, my hope was that so Teresa can look at these and see what solutions we can do with your list. I mean, like Chris was saying, can we work these out with our current contract?
That's how I'd like to see it happen.
There are items that will need to be added to the contract. But that leaves a question as to what happens, and, and this is a discussion maybe for CLIP. What happens when they don't follow through with some of the items that are added to the contract?
Well, I guess for clarification, what, what I had in mind last time was that we would get kind of a redlined version of the current contract with what gets crossed out and what, ideally, everything they would like, start with everything they would like added, and then go from there, you know?
Or changed, added or changed.
Does that, that be acceptable?
Does that provide a bit of clarity? Alex?
I don't, I mean...
Does it provide clarity?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. All right, so last time there was apparently some question about whether I called the voice, voice vote correctly or not, so we're going to roll call it.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Torneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Vedvik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes.
All right, motion is seven to zero. Back to CLIP it goes. All right, moving on to item G, Cronwetter twenty-six thirty, outdoor rec plan.
So, this was sent to CLIP at their last meeting, just to see if they would like to continue with the outdoor rec plan. Uh, we had Fred from North Central Regional Planning Commission come and give a little presentation about the outdoor rec plan. Uh, so, I had a conference last week and learned a little bit more about this. And basically what Fred was saying, as well as what was talked about during that session about the outdoor rec plan, is either you have a company come in and do your outdoor rec plan, that makes you eligible for state funding and federal funding for park grants, or funds, I should say. Uh, or you pretty much don't do it at all, because if you do it in-house, the ranking committee basically will look at it and say, "Well, this person's biased because they did the outdoor rec plan, so they know what they want, and they're trying to push for this." Where if you have a third-party person do it, it looks a lot better and boosts you up in the ratings.
I think that's what we kind of talked about the last time.
We did, yeah. I just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit.
That's what we wrote before with clarification.
Yep. So, uh, with CLIP approving it, bringing it back to the village board, it's basically back to the village board to keep moving with this, or null and void it until we bring it back next year.
And six grand is what?
Six thousand.
And we talked about that, CLIP, that we, we agreed to go with it this time, because our current plan will be expired.
At the end of the year.
And we figured that that money could be made up if we do get any grants.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So, it's worth trying it.
It's good for five years.
We just need to make sure we're diligent about trying to apply for some grants.
Right. And I was talking with Brad about it, and I guess previous public works directors kind of started with some grants, but then when they left or whatnot happened, then it wasn't continued. So, that's kind of what happened the last five years, or some just didn't do it at all. So...
Yeah, I mean, I agree. We, I think we desperately need some park improvements in general. I mean, I don't know else to put it, but you look at any other community, especially close to our size, and our parks are far behind, I think, around here at least.
Well, to me, the question is more of, um, I kind of question the fact that these can't be done in-house, because they're supposed to be our, our plan. You're just having a third-party write it up and put all these beautiful pictures in there and all that.
Yeah.
They're still asking you or the village for what we want for our plan. So, I don't, I don't understand how that can somehow be biased if, if you put it in writing or if they put it in writing.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I was told at, when I was talking to the experts about this. They said, you know, if you do it in-house, they're going to bump you down a couple of points, and a couple of points might mean the difference of getting thirty thousand dollars for the grants or not, which, I, I agree with what you're saying there. It's like, it's, we need this, we can tell, hey, this park is lacking, this park's lacking. Simple, but just to have somebody else do it.
What you, what you convey to them, what you want.
Exactly.
Park plan, kind of word, what the direction is.
Right. And there's some parks that we have, they're pretty obvious. It's like, this one needs to be upgraded. So, I mean, anybody can see that, but the voting committee just wants to see it for the party.
And how do you determine what our wants are? Are you doing a survey, or?
Yeah, there's going to be a, a community survey that we will send out. It's either going to be online, mailed out, some form, uh, and we'll get responses back that it'll rate, the parks rate what they do, I think that might be included in here as well.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a copy of kind of few questionnaires, um, that people are going to vote on. And so, people will send that back, and then, uh, North Central Regional Planning Commission will kind of compile all that and bring it back to CLIP as well, and it's going to be an ongoing thing.
And there may be questions that are on this that we've developed ourselves or changed slightly for what they're proposing.
Right.
So, Lee, you got a comment?
Uh, just that, when we had that conversation at the last meeting, while that was going on, I looked up the, uh, chapter of the administrative code that has the requirements, and, um, you know, I wouldn't know how to do it. There was not, it was not like hard, finite requirements. It was, um, all kinds of, uh, take this into account, take that into account. Uh, I guess it's planner speak, and I'm not a planner. And I mean, if we had a planner in-house, it's actually a profession, and that's what the central planning commission does, right? If we had a planner in-house, and I, I think you could do one adequately in-house, that might still lose a few points for being in-house, but, um, you know, I don't think we have a planner like that. Uh, I don't think you're going to come anywhere near replicating an actual good plan, uh, without having it professionally done. That's, that's what I thought when I saw that, uh, administrative code requirements.
Any other discussions? What do you guys want to do?
I move to continue to work with North Central Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Aaron, and a second by Alex to continue to recommend working with North Central Regional Planning Commission.
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, motion, motion of...
That was the motion, yeah?
Yeah, I brought it up again, just, you know, in our code fifty point zero five, general provisions. Uh, this applies to all grants governed by this chapter. Number two, environmental quality is essential and shall be preserved and enhanced. Okay, that's the planning element. So, it's not even like a, a finite thing where I can check a box or, or whatever else. Uh, it, it, everything like that in here, it's a list of twenty-six things, and they're all just kind of squishy like that. So, I, I don't know how you, I couldn't possibly write that up. That's all.
So, Aaron, when you say continue to work with them, are you saying to spend the six grand on the plan?
Yeah, we have that.
You might want to say that.
We have that in the budget.
No, you want, you want to say that in the motion?
Sure. I move to approve...
But you can amend.
You can get it amended, yeah.
Um, I'd like to amend my motion to include the price tag of six thousand dollars, which is budgeted.
You ready with that, Alex?
Yeah, second.
All right, so the motion was to continue to work with the North Central Regional Planning Commission with the amount of six thousand dollars to complete the plan. Any further discussion?
I just, uh, just want to say it kind of sounds like a racket, you know, where these guys are, are making rules that protect other people in their profession. And I, I'm kind of sensitive to the village being played for suckers, you know, by some of these professional outfits. Um, certainly the parks can use help. Um, but just by having this plan, don't think it's pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. You still have to get the grants, so...
That's, yeah, all state and federal funds are...
I'll vote for it, but, uh, I don't like it. I don't like it at all.
See all large, or how much we do get in grants too.
Well, I was hoping that would happen five years ago, because I brought the same issue up five years ago. Uh, at that time, they said, you know, nobody had the time to do it, so... Yeah, well...
Thank you. All right, go ahead, color roll, please.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Torneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Vedvik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
All right, motion carried seven to zero. We went on to item, sorry, new business, item six. Item H, attorney requests for RFPs. So, we meant to bring this back last meeting, and it got left off the agenda, but per the village's request, and specifically Aaron's request, that we sent out the RFP. We sent out the RFP to the same list of attorneys we did, when we were looking for a village attorney to replace Hap. And we got one response, and it was from Axley Burnelson. And if that name sounds familiar to you guys, that's the attorney that's involved in a suit against us with Eau Claire River and all of them. So, Axley Burnelson has since pulled their RFP, so now we have none.
So, so we got this guy from Wild Riley doing a prosecution, um...
Well, Wild Riley was, they were asked, and they refused.
You mean, just through the RFP, not talking to this guy personally?
Well, he was the guy that applied last time, so when the RFP went out last time, and Wild Riley submitted, that, he was the one that submitted.
Okay.
So, this time he neglected, he, this time he elected not to submit, since we didn't get anything from them. So, I, Lee, did you want to kind of comment or anything about?
Just going back quickly, uh, in our code fifty point zero six has a lot of the requirements as well. If you're interested and want to look those up, but it's, again, it's just kind of if-then stuff that planners must know how to do. So, yeah, about the RFP, um, yeah, I remember it now. Uh, that's partly why we decided to get all the legal stuff out in the air, in case that was gone. So, so that people do what was going on. We were kind of waiting for a new administrator, and that just went on and on and on. And so, we better bring it forward then, because maybe I'll go, um... So, about the RFP, um, first of all, I could say that standard practice at every law firm, uh, when you're deciding to intake a new client, is to do what's called a conflict check, where you check, uh, your database, history of clients, you get enough info from the person, you know, to see if anything gets flagged where you can't take that client. So, I can tell you, there, there's no conflict, uh, difficulty with my firm's representation of the village. Uh, and I know it said in public comment that, uh, someone inquired at the firm, and I think that's true, but there was not even a callback. Um, even if there was a callback, that doesn't create an attorney-client relationship. So, there's no conflict there, I can tell you. Um, and I can tell you that because we do, as I kind of described last time, so much municipal law, we're, we're basically the municipal side of things. So, if someone calls us up and wants to sue a municipality or something like that, we don't touch it, just in general. Um, that's just a professional thing. Most attorneys in some area of law, like if you're an employment attorney, you're basically to focus on either employer's side or employee's side. But people don't jump back, back and forth. You don't prosecute some people and then do criminal offense for some other people, you know, simultaneously. It's just too hard, and you can, uh, you can kind of burn your reputation. You know, if I take a municipality somewhere to the cleaners, um, they remember that, they will, and word gets around. And next thing you know, I'm submitting for an RFP somewhere, and I don't get a second glance, because, you know, isn't that that guy that, you know, that's so, you just don't work both sides like that. Um, as far as the RFP, I wasn't here when, uh, Aaron, you made your comments, and I'll, I'll discuss this generally, because I have in the past, but it was before your time, Aaron. Um, a lot of those things you stated were not accurate, so I just want to speak to that a little bit. But you're probably unaware also that that is like the third or fourth time I have heard those almost same exact comments, so I had deja vu when it happened. So, it's probably because you're the newest new guy, I assume, or one of them. Because someone had this, had Leonard Ludi going for this, and then he met with me and realized it wasn't accurate, and nothing happened. I think Camford too, somebody got him going on this. He also met with me and realized there wasn't anything really to that, and nothing happened. That's why nothing happened. So, I haven't even been here two years yet. Um, I'm not going to tell you you can't do an RFP. I mean, that's, that's not my place. That'd be a silly thing to say for me, so...
The RFP was brought up a couple of months ago, and it was when we were looking at how much money we spent last year. In the last two board meetings, we've had it in the packet, what you've been, showing us what you've been working on, a lot of was last year too. I had no idea you were working on all those things. So, thank you for, thank you for bringing all this to the board to show us.
Yeah, that was probably part of it too, but honestly, we thought maybe I was going to be gone, so everyone should know what's going on. Um, yeah, and we didn't have a chance to talk before that happened at the meeting, and, you know, even if we had, you still could, you still could have requested it, you know? I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have stamped my foot and say no. Um, so, that's your right to do. I, I, by the way, can, uh, be fired at any time for any reason or no reason, just so that's clear. I can also quit whenever I want. Let's keep that in mind.
I, I accept your resignation.
So, uh, one thing I can say specifically, the form of the bills currently, um, because that was mentioned. I know I've brought that up myself, I think five times that I could remember offhand, because I sent it to the board, I sent it to APC, I sent it to Dan Mahoney, I sent it to Leonard Ludi, and I sent it to Pete Camford. And all, all, all that, there's only ever one decision made by any person that was Leonard, and his decision was to keep them exactly the way they are. So that's why they are the way they are. That doesn't mean you can't change it, I'm still open to that, it's just that I've, that's the only input I ever got, is to have them the way they are. So if you wanna wait for another administrator, you can, uh, who knows how long we'll be waiting, so if you wanna do something in the meantime, you know, you're welcome to discuss that. As far as, uh, other things, like I've never charged for travel, uh, still. So I've also, um, it was mentioned reading the packets. So when I first started, I was told not to read any packets, and then I would come to meetings and get asked about something in the packet, and then someone would say like, oh, that wasn't a very complete answer. Well, of course it wasn't, I was asked a question about something I was told not to read. So if I'm coming to the meeting, just so you know, I do read the packet like a normal person first, so that I could actually, you know, if I get asked a question, I actually, actually try to answer it. If it's a packet for a meeting that I'm not attending, uh, first of all, people forget to send them to me half time. But if they do get sent, I do a very, very cursory review, so fast I don't even write it down. And all I'm doing there, because you guys don't wanna charge or be charged for that, and all I'm doing with that is looking to see if there's a red flag that really jumps out. And if there is, I might have to bring it to your attention so it can be, uh, adjusted. Literally, that's how we don't catch a lot of things, is we're not checking a lot of things, right? And there's only been a handful of times where I found something on my end. Just give one example that I remember, it was when we were, um, changing the rental forms for the village facilities that people could rent a room or something. And the suggested language to, to append those forms was gonna be a double indemnification. So basically, uh, you don't do that. We rent to someone and we make them indemnify us, 'cause we don't want them to sue us, uh, we don't know what they're doing in there, and if they fall and hit their head, you know, that's not our problem, right? So the, the draft had it going both ways, where we were actually indemnifying them too, and which would have made us potentially liable. And so what it created liability where there should not be any. So that's like a classic thing where I caught it, we got it adjusted, so it didn't actually happen, and, and we avoided that self-created problem, okay? Doing a cursory review like that, you know, I'm sure I don't catch everything, but that's what's the best we can do, uh, at this, you know, at this time or since I've been here. I don't remember if there's a lot of other stuff, I mean, I don't know, to tell you, after, especially after last time, I mean, I've been making bills for municipal clients in the private sector for the past nine plus years. Not a lot of them in that time. I usually answer billing questions for free, like some people charge for that, I don't. So if someone's got a question, like ask Chris, he might know the answer, but he can tell, ask me, or now we have a finance person again, maybe he'll ask. But if you got a question on a bill, I usually just address that without cost. I don't know, anything else, you think, Chris?
No, I think that's fine.
I mean, I guess, yeah, the only question I kinda have, RFP or whatever, you know, I'm not too much into it, but like, you have multiple municipal clients, right?
Sure.
Other attorneys have multiple municipal clients, like when you're determining a conflict of interest, conflict of interest, like would you take two municipal clients in the same general geographic area?
That happens a lot.
So you would take potentially like Dejay Mozeni or Weston if you had Corona weather, or would you wanna build, or a municipality in between, or I guess, how do you? The reason I'm asking is, right, we didn't get any responses to our, our F P.
Right.
But.
Well, we got one.
You got one from, you know, Madison.
Yeah.
That had to withdraw.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would, um, it depends on the situation, like I ask permission and make sure everything's gonna be fine, 'cause if they have a conflict situation, you know, I, I can't do both. So if you've, maybe you've got a village and it's, uh, there's a town surrounding it or next to it, you know, is it a smart idea to take that town and that village? Not if there's gonna be an annexation anytime, you know, not if they got extra jurisdictional boundary issues. So, but usually you can ask and, um, for me, I take them on, 'cause everyone tells me there's no problem. You know, and if, if one type pops up, you know, we'll address it. But, uh, yeah, I always ask and get that assurance that it's fine, and, um, so those times I do it, right? 'Cause you don't wanna have an inter-municipal conflict. Generally, other than those issues I mentioned, they're genuinely rare. You don't have boundary disputes with other villages or cities as, as a village here. You know, are you, are you wondering why other people in the community didn't apply?
No, I guess that's, could be one way to put it.
It's 'cause you're quite famous. You're quite famous.
Famous or infamous?
Infamous, I guess you would say.
So very famous, right? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, statewide famous. I've, yeah, it's funny, like I have clients, not just the next county over, but like a county or two over. And sometimes, uh, when I talk to them, like, they've heard about something lately with Corona weather, and, 'cause they know I represent Corona weather, and they're like, did that really happen? You know, I get that from like a client, two counties over, you know what I mean? I don't even know how they hear this stuff, uh, but it's out there. Yeah, it's been a raucous, it's been a very raucous, uh, time here, okay? Been plenty of headlines. We discussed last time how exceptionally rare it is for your own board members to be suing you. I mean, that doesn't happen. As far as being an attorney, you know, a board member sued the village's attorney, so how many attorneys do you think? I mean, a lot of people think I'm crazy for still being here. And I, I do get asked that quite often, what am I doing? My response is, uh, you know, I live here too, I'm a resident. I happen to be a municipal attorney, and I just thought I could help do some good here, um, 'cause I, it's actually what I do. It's partly why I've never charged for travel. Travel expenses are enormous. I was just at a place with an RFP recently, and they only had, I don't know if it was two applicants or it was, 'cause it was me and one other person. And I don't, I don't know if it was just two applicants or those are the best two, or how that shook out, but both of us were pretty far away. I mean, I was there for an interview under serious consideration, and I was an hour and a half away, and I'm gonna have to charge that kinda time. 'Cause that's three hours of my day just back and forth, plus meeting at the meeting. And that's one of the things I told them, I was like, you know, do you realize you're paying for every meeting like twice because of these travel costs? 'Cause they had the virtual equipment, but they, I could tell they hadn't really thought about using it very much. And I was just trying to caution them, you know, I'll come, don't worry about that, but you're not, you're gonna get real tired of paying for it, and you gotta really think about how often you're gonna do virtual now, if you're only taking people that are hours away. The other guy was further away. So. I don't know, if there's ever, yeah, if you have, have questions about, uh, those sort of things, I can respond to them.
Do, do we have a motion on the floor, or what's, what's going on here?
No, we're just.
What do we do with this?
Not background. We're not doing anything with it.
Oh, well, okay.
There's nothing to do.
Oh, okay, good.
So our, the board requests RFP, these are the results, and there was some issue as to clarification of why the RFP was even being called, so that's, we're having a discussion on this process. So there's nothing more to do, so if we're, if there's no more discussion, we can move on.
I have one more thing to discuss. Here's an email I sent to you, Chris, back on October twenty-second, just to give everybody an accurate timeline here. Chris, my agenda item is to discuss the RFP for legal services to see if the village can reduce our costs and improve our performance of what we're currently receiving. If the board wants to give direction or take no action, I guess that will be determined during discussion. With our twenty twenty-four legal services expenses being so high, it's probably a good idea to discuss it. And at that current time, we were constantly having budget amendments, 'cause we didn't have enough money set aside for legal services. So that's why this was brought forward then, so now, fast forward, you know, we're in February, February tenth, okay? So now I've seen a lot of what Lee's work is, and I'm glad, I'm glad you were doing all that hard work for Corona weather twenty twenty-four, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
I didn't, I was unaware of all those things you were working on.
Dare I say, you're still not aware of all the things I gotta deal with to be the village attorney here. You know, as you see other staff deal with things as well. I was gonna say, oh, shoot. You reminded me of something I already forgot.
I mean, I mean, all of this is, you know, right, all of this really stems from the same root cause, right? I mean, you know, our reputational risk, you know, you bring up the administrators, it's the same, same issue here. We're not even getting any applicants for attorneys for RFPs, you know, not speaking about you, but the RFP went out, no one cared to come in. We've had an administrator about three, four total months, my whole term, and here that was an interim. We've had no administrator at all. It was either hired out or whatever since, what, June, July? This is what, month nine? I mean, I mean, it gets back, and there was a comment about committee and committees going nowhere. Well, it went nowhere, 'cause the board shot down the recommendation, recommendation on that committee, which was to split APC into two. You know, what is he, what is APC doing right now?
Okay, it's.
We have no.
Alex, we're getting off topic.
Real way off.
I, I remembered, Aaron. Alright, so. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know.
Trying to get.
It's not like I thought, without reason, that someone would wanna look into it with how much got spent, you know, I realize that. But I don't know if everyone was aware that fifty percent of that last year was that Von Briesen firm, which I had nothing to do with, that was not me. So I was only half of that total last year. And that's, hold on, that's, that was an independent hire. So an RFP to switch me out wouldn't have changed that half that was spent on like a Von Briesen or an equivalent, just so you're aware. Does that make sense? 'Cause we have different contracts, they have different rates, their rate was much higher than me. So you only affect this half of last year, you know, by doing this local RFP, if that makes sense.
Well, that, that brings up a question, I was wondering about.
What's, what's your question?
You, you billed the village for reviewing that contract and supposedly approved it. I don't know how that happened after the board voted not to hire an outside firm, and two weeks later, you're approving a contract like that. What, who, who authorized that contract?
Well, I think I may have looked at it later, but Leonard Ludi was here at the time and he handled all that. Remember, I stepped, I wasn't part of that.
Well, you billed for it in February.
I think, well, I think after he left, we had to figure out what was going on, you know, once again. We kinda start over every time we lose one of those people, and.
Well, he, he was just starting in February. He, he didn't leave till me.
I don't know, if I looked at something, it would have been, 'cause Leonard asked me. I don't know, that was, you're talking a year ago? I don't know offhand.
Okay, alright, anything else on this? Okay, we're gonna move on. Item I, driveway access, four nineteen dash six variance, so is this your P?
I, I, I move we approve, uh, ordinance amendment number twenty-five oh one to change, uh, ordinance four nineteen dash six.
Yeah, you got a motion by Ken, a second by Chris, to approve the changes as presented.
Like, is there some background, like?
Discussion from committee of thinking on this?
What this was derived from is several residents have, had, came to, contacted me. They had, say, garages up that were probably there thirty years. Uh, I think that one was even there forty years. They actually had a driveway coming from the second garage, it was already about three quarters of the way there. It might even been there in the, in the beginning, but then they moved the road, and he never finished the driveway after they moved the road.
They moved it away from his driveway?
Yeah, they moved it away from his driveway. They, 'cause they, the whole subdivision got redeveloped, and the, the road kinda took a curve instead of a straight line. And, and I honestly, I don't know the exact routing of that road, but, um, now he's been just driving over the grass. And he's like, well, I finally wanna finish off my driveway after about forty years, well, then you got denied the permit because the current language won't allow him to finish the driveway because it's too close to his other driveway. And it's, and there's other, other, uh, examples of garages that were, probably some of them thirty, forty years old, that people just drive over the grass and they're like, you know, we wanna make our house nicer again and put a real driveway in there. And the way the current ordinance stands is they can't use their, they can't do, do a real driveway. They'll still just drive over the grass, but this is just to give, uh, uh, give him permission to actually grant the ordinance or the, the permit so that he can actually finish his driveway, you know, the right way.
Where's this at?
Uh, one of the houses on Meadow Road.
Okay.
There's one on Russell, I think I had like three of them, but bottom line is you have an existing garage with an existing, like a two dirt path road that's been there forever, and they just wanna improve it to match it up with your existing driveway, or add another access, improve an, an, an existing access, basically. The access is technically there, but I can't issue a permit, you know.
Based on current ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I need. There is one correction though, um, where it says the test, Jim, it should say interim clerk, the doctor.
This isn't in my copy.
Just kidding. Got it. So I need an amendment to the motion to make that correction?
Just to add interim in front of.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move to amend my motion to, um, recommend we approve this twenty-five dash zero one with the amendment of changing recorder to interim clerk.
Yes, I'll agree with that.
Alright, so the motion is to approve as revised, any other discussion? So the motion is to approve ordinance number twenty-one dash oh one. Good color roll, please, Jim.
Chris Foll.
Yes.
Chris Eiden.
Yes.
Kentorneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yeah.
Alex Vedvik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. Alright, motion carried seven to zero. We're moving on item eight, UTV, ATV, thirty hours. Is there a reason why you guys didn't just change hours, you removed hours altogether?
Yeah, well, this is a good discussion, that clip, we had several residents here, uh, requesting this. I believe Mozeni does not require, or does not have any timeframe on theirs. Weston does, theirs is like midnight. One of the arguments was, it's like, okay, the, uh, some of the guys like to hunt and stuff, and it's like, what, it's twelve oh one now, you know, I can't get home. So we thought, well, as long as you're, you know, let's just take the time limit off. If it becomes a problem, we can always add a time limit, we're not gonna start accusing people of doing wrong things right off the bat. We'll just, you know, if we're allowing them on the road, why is there a timeframe limit, you know?
Chief didn't have a problem with it.
Chief did not have a problem, and.
I was just gonna ask, I'll tell you.
Yep.
He may have, but chief didn't.
So, and I know Mozeni didn't have a time limit out also, but.
Well, I, I move we approve, uh, ordinance amendment twenty-five dash zero two.
Second. Hang on.
I bet we got the same problem. Same issue.
Uh, with, with, with the amendment, uh, that the signatory Jennifer Poyer be identified as interim clerk.
Do you agree with that amendment?
Yes.
So that was Ken, made the motion, and Aaron made the second. Alright, Lee, you had comment?
Yeah, that's a good explanation on the hours. The hours are not a statutory operational requirement. The import there, which I don't like having non-statutory provisions in the ordinances, because there's very limited enforcement of that. You know, maybe our own police force would enforce that, but no other police agency will, 'cause it's not in the statute. Uh, and there's, it's a little questionable when you get outside of the statute. So it, I would say it's better, I guess, not having an hours requirement. You could do it, but just be aware, it's, it's harder to enforce.
So just to clarify, we are totally removing any hours, right? Because I saw a couple of different things in the report, but then the.
No, it's hours.
You can do it two AM, three AM, whatever, okay.
So when they come by your house at four in the morning, you can't come to the house?
I don't know, it'll be different than someone revving their truck.
Well, some of them are, are no louder than most cars, you know, they're not like they have no muffler or something like that.
Any other discussion? The motion is to approve as amended, twenty five dash two. Here, another more discussion, Glenn Culler, please.
Chris Paul.
Yes.
Chris Eiden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bedbick.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. Our motion carried, seven zero. All right, moving on to number seven, the consent agenda, we have appointment of a crossing guard. We have a liquor license and a clip minutes. I entertain a motion to approve all as presented or discuss items individually as soon requested.
I move to approve the consent agenda items KLM.
Second.
Move, what's the second? An emotion by Alex, or, yeah, Alex, a second by Ken to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Oliver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll vote, motion carried. Item number eight, we have previous meeting minutes from the July thirteenth village board. Questions, comments? Entertain a motion to approve.
Also move. Second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Chris to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Oliver, say aye.
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 We'll vote. Item O, minutes from January twenty seventh, village minutes, questions, comments? These are the ones that came back after the clarification of a previous motion from the meeting before, if you guys remember. Any discussion approval? I think a motion approved. Second. A motion by Chris, second by Aaron to approve the twenty, July, January twenty seventh minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Oliver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll vote, motion carried. We did ten, eleven already. Item number twelve, conservative items for next agendas.
Yeah. I know we had discussed in the budget, kind of, because there was no time to get it done, but. I guess you'd say a budget amendment, as we discussed. Not really retroactive, but a budget amendment to improve the financial condition. Of the village, similar to my proposed budget amendment. During the budget.
Can you work with John, whatever it is you're contemplating?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Bring that up for next week, next month's.
Yeah, for the what?
Yeah, for the next meeting.
What is that, the twenty fourth?
Yeah.
Meeting, yeah, I can just send them like that.
Okay. Anything else?
The other one I thought of, I know it's kind of random seeming, but, and it was before I was on the board, but chickens. In the village, it's kind of a random thought, but we've had record high egg prices. In the country and the forecast would go up more and more and. It was something that was brought up to, by a resident and kind of.
I think that I have to go to Clip first, wouldn't it?
So, so that, that didn't pass, that didn't pass last night?
No, it passed chickens.
Well, we're, we're way behind the times here.
Not for the half acre. Well, we're getting off topic, we're discussing, we're not supposed to be discussing it.
So, good, let's go for it.
I would say chickens.
So chickens at the next meeting.
Yeah. Well, unless Clip wants to take it.
Well, the board's got to decide if we want to do chickens or not, I mean, I think that's.
Well, I, I, it's because I can't direct by myself, you or a committee to do stuff. So I either have to bring it up here or other.
Yeah, so he brings it up and then we can, we can either decide if we want to hear it or if we want to send it to the committee, we've done that in the past. And we aren't going to sit here and discuss it.
Right.
So do we want to discuss it as a board or we want to send it to Clip?
I think it's going to end up at Clip either way, so I.
What did you say?
It's probably most efficient if Clip takes it, but if they don't want to.
So Clip can work with, or staff can work with Clip.
Yeah.
Sounds good. And they can talk about chickens and they can have chicken dinner when they talk about chickens.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, item number thirteen.
I move adjourn.
Second. Got a motion by Ken, a second by myself, adjourned, any further discussion, hearing none, Oliver, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll vote, motion carried.